The Dayton City Commission meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation.
Thank you, Your Honor. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry, I'm ready.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, a moment of silence, please, in memory of those individuals who lost their lives in the shooting in the Oregon District. Okay, thank you. Now, Ms. Turner-Sloss.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you with bowed heads and humble hearts. We take this time in this moment to recognize those who have lost their lives to senseless violence. Lord, and we remember them and their memories and their lasting impression that they left on their loved ones, their friends, and this community, and all over throughout every corner of this, of this country, Father God. We ask that you just continue to be with us, give us discernment, wisdom, and understanding to carry out your will that you have for us, to serve your people in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Praise for the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Blackshear, we have the roll call, please.
Mayor Memes.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Turner-Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion then to approve the minutes from the July 30th meeting?
So moved, Your Honor. Second the motion, Your Honor.
It's been probably moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the July 30th meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay.
We need to excuse Commissioner Fairchild.
Yes.
Your Honor, I move to excuse Commissioner Fairchild. Second, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been probably moved and seconded to approve Commissioner Fairchild from this evening's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, so, communications and invitations, Ms. Blackshear.
There are none, Your Honor.
Okay, so, we did have a presentation this evening, and it was the Western Stars Award Winning Drill Team. They may be here. If they do, we will move and allow them to come up and receive their recognition. Okay, thank you. So we move forward. Count items. Ms. Blackshear, are there any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Your Honor, I would like to request the addition of legislation pertaining to tonight's public hearing at the desire of the commission.
So we have, Ms. Sixteen, additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Your Honor, I have no additions or deletions or comments to the calendar this evening.
Okay. Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who would like to speak on the city manager's recommendations or registered?
None on city manager's recommendations, Your Honor.
Okay. All right, commissioners, comments on the city manager's recommendations. Mr. Turner-Sloss?
Not, I don't have any. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you.
No.
Shaw? Ms. Joseph? Okay. All right, may I have a motion then to approve the city manager's recommendations?
I move to approve the city manager's recommendations.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been probably moved and seconded to approve the city manager's recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, legislation, Ms. Blackshear.
First reading, emergency resolution number 6877-25, extending a temporary moratorium not to exceed 180 days on the acceptance and processing of applications for zoning, occupancy, conditional use, and/or building permit approval, approvals for residential facilities, also known as group homes, within the city of Dayton, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Your Honor, resolution number 6877-25 being declared emergency, I move for its immediate passage. Second, Your Honor.
Okay, it's been probably moved and seconded to have resolution number 6877-25 declared as emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Second reading, emergency resolution number 6877-25, extending a temporary moratorium not to exceed 180 days on the acceptance and processing of applications for zoning, occupancy, conditional use, and/or building permit approvals for residential facilities, also known as group homes, within the city of Dayton, Ohio. Mayor Memes.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Turner-Sloss.
Aye.
First reading, emergency resolution number 6878-25, authorizing the city of Dayton's continued participation in, in the multi-jurisdictional hazard management plan in conjunction with the Montgomery County Office of Emergency Management and declaring an emergency.
Your Honor, resolution number 6878-25 being declared emergency, I move for its immediate passage. Second, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, it's been probably moved and seconded to have resolution number 6878-25 declared emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay.
Second reading ordinance number 32153-25, amending revised code of general ordinances sections 52.01, 52.03, 52.04, 52.05, 52.08, 52.10, 52.11, 52.13, 52.14, 52.14 pertaining to the regulation of the use of public and private sewers and drains, and the discharge of water and waste into the public sewer system. Mayor Memes.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Turner-Sloss.
Aye.
Second reading ordinance number 32154-25, repealing, amending, and enacting various sections of the revised code of general ordinances relating to the zoning code. Mayor Memes.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Turner-Sloss.
Aye.
That concludes the legislation, Your Honor.
Okay, so our timing is pretty good right now, so I'd like to have our guests, they will come forward, from the Western Stars Drill Team. I should say, the award-winning Western Stars Drill Team. Give them a hand.
So hello.
Turn this way.
Yes. So my name's Deanna Rogers. I think we have some in the hallway. There's quite a few, so we'll just go on with what we have. We took 60 kids to Las Vegas, Nevada, by plane last week. Our senior division and our drum line won first place in the world. Our Pee-wee division.
Hold on.
Our Pee-wee division won second, and our junior division won third. We have two other groups who did not come to Las Vegas with us, but they're undefeated here in the city of Dayton, so this is some of the girls. We have some of the guys here, and we're just here trying to make a difference, giving the kids something positive to do during the summer. I'm sure people may hear us, they may make noise complaints, but we're just trying to do something positive, keeping the kids off the streets, out of gangs, keeping them in school. We have five graduating seniors, three of them, one's already left for Norfolk, Virginia. We have one going to Central State University, and then another one is going to be a dance major in Pittsburgh. So that's pretty much what we do. We just represent uplifting and building the youth during the teenage crisis years. Here's one of our mini drummers right here. Yes, he does play the drums. So yeah, it's just, it's just something positive that we do. We had a parade a few weeks ago, community event. So yeah, that's just, that's us, and that's who we are.
Yeah, I think you won first place in that as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Yes.
Are there any more that we are aware of that may be in the hallways or on the stairs?
I think they're in the hallway.
They're trying to be detected.
Yeah, I think they're having to go one by one. We have a group of 87. I'm not sure how many is here today. But yes. Yeah.
Probably with the pleasure of the commission, I think I'd like to maybe wait till we get all of them here.
Okay.
I thought you guys were all ready.
Okay.
But we don't want to rush you at all, and we don't want to miss anyone.
Okay.
Okay?
All righty. Thank you.
So just have a seat, we'll get back with you.
Okay.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Yeah, give them a hand again. Okay, so at this point in time, we're going to open the public hearing. Number sixteen.
Your Honor, at this point in time, I'd like to call forward Elizabeth Dakin, who is a member of our planning staff, who will lead us through the public hearing.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Dakin. I'm with the Planning Division. I am here to take us through the rezoning application for 742 to 746 North Belmont Park. And this would rezone .21 acres, and this is two parcels, from MR5, the mature single-family residential, to CI, campus institutional. The applicant here is Kettering Health Network, and the parcels are within Five Oaks. So here's our vicinity map. You can see to the north of these two parcels is Neal, and then to the west is Belmont Park North, and to the south is Shaw, and this directly borders the hospital. Here's our zoning map. In the yellow there is the campus institutional, it's where the hospital resides. Light pink is the MR5, mature, single-family residential, and down in the corner there, in that other pink shade, is the mature multifamily. So here we see just on north Belmont Park, looking south, to the left there are the two parcels, which currently have houses on them. Here are some other site photos. On the left, you can see the two parcels with the houses on them, the front yard area, and then on the right is looking into that rear yard of those two parcels, currently accessed through a third parcel that is on the corner of Shaw and Belmont Park North. So these are directly adjacent to campus institutional, and are included within the Grandview Hospital General Development Plan, which was done or updated in 2020. The whole purpose for campus institutional in that zoning district is to help guide growth for institutions such as a hospital or a campus for learning, or something of that sort. This zoning map amendment would ensure that these properties, which are owned by the hospital and utilized by the hospital, would fall under these stamp standards, review criteria, and zoning district as the rest of the campus. And then, also just to note that should this rezoning be approved, all new development would need to be approved via an update to the general development plan, which would ensure a public process and reasonable development within the whole campus. So they look at the campus as a whole when they do that. And then also just to note, an application to update the general development plan will likely be coming forward in the near future. So here, just as evidence, here's the last approved general development plan for the entire campus, and it did include those two parcels in it, even though they weren't zoned, campus institutional. North Central Priority Land Use Board met on June 4th and voted to recommend approval as submitted. Plan Board recommended approval on June 10th, and Planning Staff recommends approval here today. Here are your commission alternatives, and with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay, commissioners, questions? Commissioner Turner-Sloss?
Yes, just very briefly, and you may have already mentioned it, and I apologize if you did, in terms of the support, were there any pushback from any neighboring community members?
Not on the rezoning. There is concern for what may go there in the future.
Okay.
However, the comment that we received for the rezoning had to do more so with the look of what might go there in the future.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw?
Good. Nothing here.
Okay, what's the will of the commission?
To move forward.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Move forward. Thank you.
Mayor, there were no citizens who registered to speak on the public hearing.
Okay.
I do, I apologize.
Uh-huh.
Mayor, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, this, um, excuse me, I apologize. Just one last question. Has the plans been revealed, or is it still in flux? Is it very fluid in terms of the future plans for that site?
So, they're still in flux at this time. They are going to be coming back with a more broad general development plan, so at this point, I, I don't have a whole lot of information.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
You good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Blackshear, excuse me. Go move forward.
Did you close?
Yep.
Okay. The legislation implementing zoning case number PLN 2025-00156 will be ordinance number 32155-25. The ordinance, the ordinance will receive a first reading only.
Okay.
First reading ordinance number 32155-25, amending the official zoning map to change the zoning of approximately 0.21 acres at 742 and 746 Belmont Park North, from mature single-family residential MR5 to campus institutional CI. And that concludes the legislation, Your Honor.
Okay, so now I think we're ready. Ms. Robinson, for the Western Stars Award Winning Drill Team, if you'll come forward.
Rogers. Ms. Rogers.
Rogers, Ms. Robinson, my bad.
Couple different lines.
Yeah. May I have, give us a, Commissioner Shaw was concerned about your being able to fit, and then it was brought to our attention that you are a drill team, so you, you have those skills to organize. Because you've taken the time to come here and, and share with us, we'd like to take the time to listen to you tell us your name and your school. So as you come forward, please be prepared to do so. Speaking to the mic, looking.
There you go.
Up here, thank you so much.
My name is Angel Watson, and I'm going to Deca Middle.
Okay.
Thank you.
Move to the other side.
My name is Devon Ray, and I'm going to Emerson Academy.
Emerson Academy, okay.
My name is Nivea, and I'm going to East Dayton Christian.
My name is Jenny, and I'm going to Pathway.
Yeah.
My name is Tanisha, and I'm going to Wright Brothers.
Now, we'll make sure that you talk loud, because your friends and family will know what school you're going to.
My name is.
As well as your classmates.
Going to the School of the Arts.
Excuse me. Hold on, slow down.
Wait a minute.
Pull the mic down a little bit, so, there you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My name is Alana, and I'm going to the School of the Arts, Stivers.
Okay.
The School of the Arts.
My name is Jenny, and I'm going to Deca Prep.
Yeah.
My name is Alea Norvell, and I go to Stivers School for the Arts.
Okay.
My name is Molly Turner, and I go to.
Can you give it to her, session? No, wait, wait a minute, because I don't think.
Kaiser.
Kaiser, okay.
My name is Taylor, and I go to Wise and Wood Middle School.
Now, reminder, use your outside voice, okay?
That's not working.
My name is Maya, and I go to Stivers.
Okay.
There you go. Good.
My name is Riley, and I go to Ruskin.
My name is Madison, I go to Pathway.
My name is Denver, and I go to Richard Allen.
Okay. It's the loudest one, thank you so far.
Say my name is Alea.
Her name is Alea, and she go to Deca Prep.
Okay, okay.
My name is Denim, and I go to Deca Prep.
Yeah.
My name is Nella, and I go to the Great Dayton School.
Yeah.
My name is Jim, I go to Richard Allen.
My name is Tiana, and I go to Charity Adams.
My name is Amia, and I go to Deca Middle.
My name is Ratin, I go to Louise Troy.
My name is Callie, and I go to Kinder.
My name is Jenny, and I go to Mother Bull.
My name, my name is Malaja, I go to Charity Adams.
My name is My Angel, and I go to Deca Prep.
My name is Malia, and I go to Inglewood Hills.
My name is Dynasty, and I go to Richard Allen.
My name is Naraya, and I go to Pathway.
My name is Gianni, and I go to Triwood Madison.
My name's Damaya, and I'm going to Dunbar.
My name is Lauren, and I go to Dunbar.
My name is Shania, and I go to Belle Haven.
My name is DeAngelo, I go to Belmont.
My name is Ashala, and I go to Triwood.
My name is London, I go to Stivers.
My name is Ale, and I go to DLA.
My name is Locan, and I go to the Great Dayton School.
Nope, she got to come back. Got to come back. We didn't hear a word you said.
My name is Locan, and I go to the Great Dayton School.
Good, thank you.
Good job.
I'm Isaiah, and I go to Deca High.
I'm Honesty, and I go to Stivers.
My name is Kylie, and I'm going to Central State, majoring in criminal justice.
Okay. Okay.
My name is Terrace, and I'm going to UC, and I major in nursing.
Okay.
Let's get the little one first.
His name is Elijah, and he goes to Montgomery Prep.
My name is Trevell Bernie, and I go to Meadowdale.
Okay.
My name is Deanna, and I go to Belmont.
My name is Marianne, and I go to Deca High.
My name's Jeremiah, and I go to Mynesburg High School.
My name's Michael, and I go to Mynesburg Prep.
My name is Ladonson, and I go to Belmont High School.
My name is Stefan, and I go to Mynesburg High School.
My name's DJ, I go to Mynesburg High School.
My name is Archie. My, my name's Archie. Kaiser.
Kaiser, okay.
My name is Avery. My name is Avery.
Preschool.
Okay, so he's in preschool, okay.
Good job, Avery.
Good afternoon, my name is Kendall McQuaid, and I go to Belmont.
Okay, okay. We get them all?
Kaden.
Kaden.
You didn't give Kaden a turn. Kaden, do you want to tell him your name? No? Okay.
So you see, we have represented the whole region, is that correct? From schools from all over the region?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. You know, so again, we have a few questions for you, of course, and I'd like to start with Commissioner Turner-Sloss. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you all very much for being here, and Ms. Rogers, thank you for being here, but if you wouldn't mind, could, Mayor, could the parents and the coaches introduce themselves?
Yep.
And please just remind everyone how long you all have been in existence.
So, Western Stars came into existence back in 1986. My mom did drill team, I did drill team, and four years ago, we redid a rebrand under the direction of her and I. So we're back four years strong under us, but it has been in existence since 1986. And this is all volunteer work, and fundraising, and just community support, parent support, yeah. And hats off to the coaches, we have some right here.
Yes.
That's our world champ coach back there, the drum line coach right there. That's Coach Myron, he's also a football coach at Meadowdale High School. We have Coach Brittany right here, she's our junior coach. We have Coach Jorian back there, she's our Pee-wee coach. We have.
Have some standing, please.
Alea and Coach Tamira back there, they're also our junior coaches. We have Ms. Mercedes back there, she's our community outreach specialist. We have Coach Bree, she's kind of all over. We're going to see Coach, we have Coach Nish right here, she's our wee-wee coach, so they're like five to seven, and then our three to five-year-old coach is Coach Cece right here. My name's Deanna, I'm the assistant director, and then also the senior coach.
Thank you very much. Thank you to my colleagues for entertaining my question and, and providing the opportunity for you all to introduce yourself. I just want to, again, thank you all for your leadership and your commitment, and you said it, Ms. Rogers, this is an opportunity to make sure that our kids have recreational activities, something positive.
Yes.
As you all heard, many of them are going off to various universities throughout the state.
Yes.
And it's just a testament of why programs such as the Western Stars Drill Team is in fact impactful in how it can change lives. So kudos to you, the family, all of the coaches, all of the, the parents, mentors, for their commitment in just, again, leaning into this space, because we know that it is a collective means, and it is a village. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And let us know how we can be of support.
Yes.
And we know that you all had a competition, I believe it was on the 19th, that is, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, every year that takes place.
Yes.
And so I just want to thank the, the staff, DPD, as well as Ms. Jackson, the Commission Office, for their hand and their support in making sure that that effort ran smoothly.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Next year, we'll see you all again, right?
Yes, next year, same time.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, I don't think I could say it any better than that. I just want to thank you for your work and working with these young people, and congratulations on all of your successes, and I want to wish you much success into the future.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay, Commissioner Joseph?
Yes, sir. It's always nice when you hear the word champions.
Yes.
So congratulations on that, that's tough to do, but for everyone, congratulations on the hard work that got you where you are. It's nice to be with friends, it's nice to do something productive, it's nice to learn from mentors, all of that kind of stuff is going to help you later on. So good luck in school this year, good luck with your competitions, thank you, like Commissioner said, thank you to all the parents who sacrificed to have this happen. I know it takes a lot, and we really do appreciate it. So good luck, you all, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Coach.
Coach, you know, I see you guys a lot, because you're practicing over at Westwood.
Yes.
So guys, it is fun to see them practice, being a drummer myself, and I get the little goosebumps, if you will, every time I see them doing their thing. The other thing that I want to mention as well, being a drummer growing up, playing, and when I was first, when I first started playing, I was not probably as good as I became later on, but I would say how much, I realized how much my parents loved me when they would tolerate the noise that I was making as, as I went through the whole process of trying to learn how to play drums. So for the parents of those drummers, raise your hands, because I have to say prayers for you as well. Do you have any, any parents of the drummers?
I think they might be, they're all out waiting. We're going to take team pictures after this.
After this?
Yeah.
All right, so all the drummers, see you guys over there, raise your hands. All the drummers, raise your hands. You got the little ones up there, you may have to raise them well, as well. And so at our police night out last night, when we were at Westwood, you guys gave us great entertainment as we were about to leave your location, and again, well, thank you so much for that as well. You are well, well worth waiting for to hear and see the ladies in their performance as well. So again, thank all of you for the work that you're doing on a continuous basis.
Thank you.
Your Honor, can we get a picture?
Should we get a picture of them?
Yep, can we get a picture of all them as well?
Line up, line up around the front here.
Someone, spit them out across the front.
Drummers, one coming to the side, two drummers coming to the side, too.
So you get Jared?
Yeah.
We did good, we're all matching, too, with the blue.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Okay. And there. Hey guys, why don't we stand so we can be in a picture?
Okay. It's taking the picture. Look that way, you guys, look that way, you guys, picture coming from that way, there you go.
Look towards the door.
Smile, Regina.
So I guess the photographers will let us know when they're ready? You got them?
Everybody says Western Stars.
We're going to the Dena R Institute.
Thomas Blackshear, do you have any citizens who are registered to speak?
Your Honor, thirteen citizens have registered. I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address the Commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on the green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on, you will have thirty seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you'll be asked to cease your comments and to take your seat. To the audience in attendance, please be mindful, this is a business meeting. And we kindly request that during this portion of the meeting, you refrain from any hand clapping, finger snapping, and conversations that will prevent the City Commission from hearing the speaker's comments. I call to the podium Ruben Castillo. Name and address for the record.
My name is Ruben Castillo, my address is forty-two ten Corundu Avenue.
You may begin.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Ruben Castillo and today I was talking about the lack of affordable housing and rent. The lack of affordable housing and rent is a problem in the community of Dayton, Ohio. This affects the people of Dayton because people end up homeless with no home or also having to move in with family members. Rent or mortgage is too expensive to pay, the minimum wage isn't enough. A lot of things are expensive compared to back in the day and people are living paycheck to paycheck. We experience not enough pay or renters overcharging and ending leases. Things are a lot more expensive. If we do nothing, people will end up homeless with nowhere else to live. To address this problem, we should invest money into abandoned houses that already exist and have strong structure. That will make it cheaper to build more affordable apartments and homes so we can house a lot of people. I would invest taxpayer funds into public funded for apartments and building cheap buildings and also having cheap rent. Use the money to rebuild more or taxpayers...or, sorry, to rebuild more so our taxpayers have homes. If we invest in rebuilding our house stock, we will see homes and more buildings around the city of Dayton, Ohio and less people on the streets. That's all.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your comments.
Whitney Harrell. Name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Whitney Harrell, I stay at thirty-seven twenty-seven Maywood Avenue.
You may begin.
Good evening.
Good evening. I was...I came to talk about the abandoned houses in the city of Dayton as well as the dilapidated vehicles sitting on the road. I feel like those cause a lot of issues in our city, even with increasing the crime rate. I was wondering, what is the city of Dayton doing in conjunction with the County Commissioners Office or whoever does dealing with the taxation on these dilapidated homes and vehicles in the city of Dayton? Because just cleaning that up would help improve the appeal of the city. So what are we doing about the appeal? And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate your comments.
Cheyenne Myrick.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
Cheyenne Myrick, thirty-seven thirty Delphus Avenue. I'm here today in support of Dayton Tenant Union's call for the city to allocate meaningful dollars into the Housing Trust Fund. One that specifically includes funding for home repairs and the improvement of living conditions for tenants and families. We cannot talk about housing in the city without talking about health. Poor housing conditions are directly tied to Dayton's crisis of infant mortality. Mold, infestation, and lack of heating or cooling systems are not just inconveniences, they're dangers. These conditions disproportionately impact low-income families who are left with impossible choices between unsafe homes or homelessness. And too often, these homes become a health hazard for babies before they're even born. I want to share a story of a client of mine. While pregnant and raising her two-year-old son, she was forced to live in a rental unit without heat during the wintertime. Her landlord ignored her repeated request for help. Eventually, she paid out of pocket to fix the furnace herself. Money that should have gone to food, rent, prenatal care, that was out of her pocket. Even after covering the emergency expense, the landlord continued to harass her for rent. The stress, the neglect, and the unsafe environment became too much. At seven months pregnant, she left Dayton altogether, experiencing homelessness just to protect her child, her children. How many more stories like hers do we need before we act? A Housing Trust Fund can help prevent these outcomes, it can fund emergency repairs, it can support proactive inspection and enforcement, it can ensure that families can live in homes that are safe, healthy, and dignified. This is not just about housing, it's about justice. It's about protecting our children before they're even born. I urge the Commission to invest in a Housing Trust Fund that meets the scale of this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Kathy Rowell.
Hi, my name is Kathy Rowell, I live at one-one-four Green Street. I was here...
Good evening.
Thank you, I was here earlier this summer and unfortunately, I'm back again. This morning, another encampment for the unhoused was plowed over. It was at the park across from the House of Bread with no warning. The path team was not informed. I have photographs and videos, sorry. This morning, I saw a person in a wheelchair being told that they had to leave and trying to put their things in garbage bags. There was a seventy-nine-year-old human being that had little to no time to pack up their belongings. We're not asking for money, we're not asking for additional resources, we're asking for communication and collaboration. I understand these are tough times and unfortunately, because we're not doing enough for affordable housing, we're not doing enough for those that are struggling. We're gonna see more of this and I will tell you right now, I just left a national meeting, homelessness is gonna get worse, especially with national policy changes. And we do not have a strategic plan on how to deal with this. I'm here today and the Dayton United Human Rights has issued a press statement about this and you'll all be getting a letter. Please asking, could there be at least a ten-day notice? If not ten days, I mean, we'll take three or four days. And please involve the social services system so that people don't lose all their belongings, they're losing their IDs, which they need, and we're losing touch with them. No seventy-nine-year-old should have to pack up their belongings in a trash bag. No person in a wheelchair should be asked to do this without any support or services. So that's all I'm here today. Could we please make sure that we're coordinating this better? There were seven police cars, a bulldozer, and a truck, and no social service agencies were on hand to reduce the harm and trauma that this causes. That's it. Could we please just communicate and collaborate so this doesn't continue to happen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
David Woods.
David Woods, thirty-two thirty Lakeview Avenue, hello there, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
How you doing? I'm mad I got an attitude, you know why, because Kettering Hospital is not here. For one, I don't want y'all to support them, for one, I want all the Kettering hospitals shut down, for one, because like I told y'all, Kettering Hospital caused my dad's death by Dr. Nick Sabran that gave him affection. And also on the list you see right here, on me suing the people, I got Bernice Newish, that pretty white woman Chapman, who witnessed my dad got choked by Kettering Hospital, I got her name on there. And I got a problem with Channel Seven too and two news. Every time I got these coverage, they don't cover that. They come all other stuff with black men, you know, going to jail and this, that, and other. When it comes to some stuff about my dad got choked in Kettering Hospital, I don't see nothing on the news on that. And I don't care if they like it or don't like it, I got attitude today now. And also, I got a problem, I talked to the chief, called the Chief of Police of Kettering, Ohio, and I told him I want him to go ahead and talk to that pretty white woman Chapman, Bernice Newish. And I told him that I want him to have her call Civil Rights Commission Christine McDonald. Christine McDonald, her phone number is nine-three-seven-two-eight-five-six-five-one-one. I want her to talk to her, because basically, that pretty white woman Chapman, Bernice Newish, she has not talked to my sister and told my sister and my nieces, my niece is thirteen and my other niece is ten. And she didn't tell my sister that my...she got choked, my dad got choked by the male nurse. And she witnessed and other white man Chapman witnessed it and also the name of the male nurse. That they...she don't...so basically, she disrespected my family and she disrespected a black woman. So I asked all the black women to go out here and call Kettering Main Campus Hospital. And their phone number is nine-three-seven-two-nine-six-two-five-five-five. And call Bernice Newish. And I want y'all to go ahead and tell her, and a white woman too, and a black woman, tell her to go ahead and tell my sister that my dad got choked and slapped by the male nurse and cause them to get critical. Because they're not showing no respect or nothing. And I'm gonna talk to the Mayor of Kettering, Ohio next week and I'm gonna ask the Chief of Police, are you gonna go ahead and get to it or not? Because I called him today and the clerk said, called the police office, he said, well, he was here today, but he left out. Then I said, oh, he came in, he said, oh, I don't think he was in today. So they keep running on excuse. I want to go ahead and talk to Civil Rights Commission Christine McDonald, because she's investigating Kettering Hospital. She has to care about what black people are and she's not even black, but she cares about what black people. And I don't...and also, I went to the mayor, like I said, Oakwood, and I told him about that pretty white woman Chapman and she got choked, she seen my dad got choked and this, that, and other. I notice every time I go to Oakwood, Myersburg, City Council, when they talk about the racist constalat on me, they always got a white cop one like this. Beside, it looks similar when I do it, but if I go to y'all's City Council in Kettering, I don't have that problem at all. So I warned the public, said, public safety, that he's still in there. And I appreciate you doing, I support the mayor and all of y'all. And I told all the black people to boycott Kettering Hospital. And Captain Perez, he's with Grand View Hospital too. I want him to come down here too and talk to y'all too, because they, you know, when I talk about them, not one of them came down here.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your comments.
Ray Elson.
Ray Elson, one-oh-nine Maple Avenue. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here with Dayton...
Evening.
Good evening, I'm here with Dayton Tenant Union as a board member. Last week, the city expressed an interest in finding teeth and silver bullets in order to hold landlords accountable. The city also expressed enthusiasm in conjunction with the zoning revamp presentation. DTU, as an organization that advocates for tenant rights and fair, safe, and affordable housing, sees our strategic interests as being aligned. In light of that, I would like to inform the city of a local model for holding landlords accountable. Centerville has a functional rental registry that ties into an inspection program. The existing registry is a series of large files that are labeled with seemingly random numbers and letters and I will be entering exhibits into the public record. Exhibit B states, "In July of two thousand and six, the City Council approved a residential rental inspection program that mandated all residential rental units in the city receive an inspection of both exterior and interior areas every two years to ensure compliance with the Centerville Property Maintenance and Zoning Codes. The goal of the program is to ensure that high standards in our fine and varied housing stock continue to be met. Our mission is to perform fair, standardized, comprehensive inspections of Centerville properties and make the city of Centerville a more desirable community." Exhibit A states, "Did you know Centerville inspects all rental properties every two years, inside and out? This program helps maintain high property standards, protect public safety, and preserve home values. In the past year alone, staff inspected two thousand two hundred and seventy-nine rental units, uncovering and addressing issues such as faulty smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, unsafe heating equipment, and hazardous hoarding conditions. While coordinating these inspections can be challenging, especially with out-of-town landlords and LLCs entering the market, Centerville remains committed. There is no charge for the initial inspection and only a small fee for follow-ups if needed. And I've been there when they've done the inspections. You get a notice of entry, the fire chief comes in and the owner comes in and they inspect all of the units. And while this isn't what brought me to DTU, let me tell you a story. Last year, there was a break in the main and my entire apartment flooded with brawl sewage and I had just renewed my lease. Luckily, I was there when it happened, but it was a situation where the entire apartment needed gutted and sanitized. I was able to call emergency maintenance, they came ASAP and the damage was extensive. I was offered a temporary place to stay or to transfer and I was transferred. I recognize that I'm lucky. It is a travesty of justice that if this had happened a few miles up the road, my story and my health outcome may have been very different. And I attribute that luck to my geographic bounds and programs like Centerville's which create accountability in landlord-tenant relations. All said, DTU requests the city create a Housing Trust Fund and use that funding to create a functional rental registry and in doing so, consider programs like Centerville's as a model. And with that, I submit the following exhibits, A to F, to the public record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments and thank you for the information.
Davion Malone. Name and address for the record.
Name and address.
Name and address.
Yes, sir.
Deion Malone, and Piedmont Avenue, three-five-three-six.
You may begin.
Okay, thank you.
Today, I hope to address the difficulties homeless people have to go through in their life without having a home, not having financial stability. It affects the community and also just ruins the financial environment, dragging down the economy. I see people without places to live everywhere, like downtown, seeing them struggle and begging for money. People make bad financial decisions, but many just have the bad luck of being poor or not being on top of their game in life. Meanwhile, we have more abandoned houses every day. It's getting to the point where there are so many abandoned homes that the government has to do something about it. In the long term, I suggest that we refurbish those abandoned buildings for housing. In the short term, the homeless still have nowhere to go. That's why I think the government is the best position to help out financially by building more shelters so people can get a head start on working and getting their lives together. I would spend taxpayer funds on more jobs, rec centers, better affordable housing, and more important rehab centers for, I mean, because most are hooked on drugs. If we do that, we will have a better community and in terms, we have a better future. My question to the City Commission is this. Can you commit to increasing funding for affordable housing and rebuilding abandoned houses? That is...that is all.
Okay, thank you for your comments, appreciate it.
Joshua Thomas. Name and address for the record.
Joshua Thomas, fifteen eighty-four Eden Del Road.
You may begin.
Evening.
Good evening, sir. I'd like to bring up the abandoned houses that we have in Dayton, Ohio. I feel like if you was able to refurbish the houses, as long as you'd be able to make affordable houses, orphanages, and build homeless shelters for people who need of houses. As long as you be able to help clean up the neighborhoods of crime, because you don't got homeless people sleep on the streets, they can't get robbed for what little they have already, as long as be able to help people get jobs that need them by be able to work at the orphanage and the homeless shelters we make. we make. And this problem affects me a lot, because I see multiple people I know who was just born in horrible situations, not built, own a house, let alone apartment, who struggle to sleep every night, to find somewhere new to sleep at every night, as long as get a meal as well, which I feel like every human should have a right to affordable housing, no matter the job they have. Another issue is, the pay is so little in Dayton for minimum wage jobs, that even people who got a job can barely pay off their mortgage or rent. But I see more people I work with, multiple people who struggle just to pay a month rent with the paychecks they get after working 48, 48 or eight hours for a paycheck. I just want to ask for the City Commission to help rebuild some of the houses for the homeless people or kids in need of housing, and also make more jobs for people that pays better for the people who needs them.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you for your comments.
Karen Smith.
My name is Karen Smith. I live at 633 Earn Road Drive.
You may begin.
Good evening, Commissioners. I want to highlight how a well-funded housing trust fund can make a real difference for Dayton residents who hold housing vouchers. These vouchers are a lifeline for many families, helping them afford safe and stable housing. But without additional support, vouchers alone aren't enough to secure or maintain a home. A comprehensive housing trust fund that includes rental assistance, home repair programs, and right to counsel addresses these challenges on multiple fronts. Rental assistance, many voucher, voucher holders will still face rent burdens beyond their subsidy covers, especially as rent rises. Emergency rental assistance can bridge gaps, prevent evictions, and help families stay housed without falling behind. Home repairs, some voucher holders live in older homes or neighborhoods with aging housing stock. Without repair support, they're stuck in unsafe or unhealthy conditions, which can jeopardize their health and their ability to keep their housing. Funding home repair programs ensures homes meet basic safety standards and are places that they can truly thrive. Right to counsel, even with a voucher and rental assistance, tenants often face eviction threats from landlords who may challenge voucher holders unfairly or raise improper fees. Having access to legal representation through right to counsel levels, the playing field, and protects families from wrongful displacement. Together, these components create a safety net that supports, supports voucher holders from multiple angles, financially, physically, and legally. They're not just statistics. They are our neighbors, our families, and our community members who deserve a stable place to call home. Funding the housing trust fund fully means investing in a real solution that keep people housed, reduce homelessness, and strengthen our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Marcel Anthony. Your name and address for the record.
Marcel Anthony, 7131 Clymore Drive.
You may begin.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Mims, Commissioner Shaw, Joseph, Commissioner Turner-Sloss. I'm here today to talk about a block party we have going on this Saturday. So, my church, Grace House Church, 1222 North Main Street, and we see people in, at our, at our location, some are, you know, dealing with homelessness, as we've heard tonight, some alcoholism, some will even put up a sign and say, "Got weed." But I serve under Pastor Emmanuel, and we believe we're part of the solution. So, "Revive Hope" is the campaign that this is, to provide hope and covering, and just meet the needs of the people that are in there, in our community. We've been doing this program for several years, and this coming up weekend, it's at 2, 2 to 5. We're gonna have everything from bouncy house for the kids, to ribs on the grill, okay? Hamburgers on the grill, grilled chicken. Did I say grilled chicken?
Yes, you did.
All right. And we're also gonna be celebrating the Dayton firefighters, they'll be coming and bringing their trucks and allowing the kids to play with the water hose, maybe they'll give me a chance, too. And, and also giving out school supplies to those kids that are be in the, in the community. Once again, we've been doing this a couple different years. And as I was just reading, and Mayor Mims, I believe I was there when you initiated the Dayton Peace Campaign, the Crock Center, and I believe we, we fall into the community engagement, steering part of that.
Yes.
We're part of a church, and we're doing activities, or we're partnership with the schools, DECA Prep, DECA Middle, and DECA High are schools that we partner with, that we give to on a yearly, yearly basis. And these also help with the neighborhood, so anyone that's coming on the street can come in and say, hey, I want some mom and pop grilled chicken, hamburger, and beef steak, baby back, barbecue, all right? So the ask really is for this to be something to use to open up the door for partnership. We wanna do more of these types of things, and we can't do that with our resources. You can fill in the blank there. But I just wanna open up the conversation. And I do have a flyer for this event, and I would be glad to talk after, to see how this partnership might be able to form and turn into something that we, I believe, we all wanna see. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Be happy to talk with you after the meeting.
Darrell Lee.
Darrell Lee, 1903 East Third Street, Dayton, Ohio.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone, sorry. I'm talking about my life and the laws. The police need to, the Chief of Police, they need to be more strict and lock these guys down, that way Dayton be more safer. My life, I barely can eat. I don't know y'all belief, but as is justice for all, you know, if criminals go do their time to society, they got another chance out to society. Darrell Lee and his kids, Darrell Lee and the rest of his kids, we, I'm not a criminal. I'm doing something that God kept me on this earth. I'm from Chicago, Illinois. I've been shot 12 times in Dayton. I barely can sleep. I got boogling fragments all through my head. I catch migraines. I barely can boo-boo. But just think about it, if we all want justice for all, and we all got kids, why do Darrell gotta suffer, and his kids gotta suffer through the city of Dayton, and I got, um, communities, people at the courthouse? I'm not a criminal. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, as we forgive those who trespass against those. Lead us not in temptations, for God is the kingdom and the power forever and ever, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, sir.
Larry Hayden. Your name and address, please.
Larry Hayden, 4028 Indian Run Drive, Dayton, Ohio, 45415.
You may begin.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. I serve on the Board of the Tenant Union. I'm here to speak about our urgent, urgent need of dedicated funding for home repairs within the housing trust fund, and why this is essential for Dayton renters. Many of the landlords in our city, those who own large apartment complexes, they live out of state. They're often, so because they're out of state, they're, they're often fully not aware of the terrible conditions their tenants are enduring. I wanna highlight one building in particular, a high-rise in Dayton, Ohio. It's 11 floors, where the elevators are constantly broken. Um, are constantly broken. This means that elderly, elderly residents and people that, with disabilities, they must be carried up and down stairs on the weekends that that elevator is broken. This is unacceptable. But the problem doesn't start there, stop there. The same tenants, they're living in mold infest, mold infestation, unreliable heating during cold months, apartment units separating from the walls, plumbing issues that go unaddressed for months and even years. Tenants in this building are, are up to date on their rent, and they're fulfilling their responsibilities, yet the landlord delays or refuses to make the necessary repairs. That's why, that's why having a set amount of funding specifically for home repairs is so important. It creates dedicated resources that fixes urgent problems that harm, harm the tenant's health and safety. Alongside a rent, alongside that, rental registry would help endure accountability on both sides. Landlords were required to register their property and respond to the code violations. While tenants, right now, they're paying their rent on time, they follow lease rules, and they have a clear protection. This kind of system builds trust and transparency. It helps landlords understand responsibility, and the tenants understand theirs. And it helps the city intervene early conditions that fall on these, on these conditions. Without these investments, families continually live in dangerous conditions, unhealthy homes. And we just wanna say, that's not acceptable. And this is not what we want in Dayton. I urge for you to fund the home repair program, to implement rental registry as a key part of housing trust fund. It's time for accountability and support for Dayton renters. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Destiny Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Destiny Brown, 131st Second Street, Dayton, Ohio, 45402. I would like to start, good evening, Commissioner, just by saying that I want, we wanted to follow up. Obviously, the Tenant Union is here, returning to discuss the importance of a housing trust fund. In the commission meeting from last week, it was mentioned by the city manager that no information had been received by the commission around the current pilot here in Dayton, as well as that there was an agreement that prevention matters when we talk about a right to counsel, and we talk about solutions for housing that are preventative versus after the fact. She also mentioned that welcome home dollars were not the only dollars that were available for housing initiatives. So, considering all of that, as a follow-up, I wanted to provide to the commission, since we shared that no information has been made available, some high-level statistics about the current pilot here in Dayton, but also, the city of Columbus has an operational access to council program. In this packet is their full report from Stout, which is an evaluation firm, to provide some data of, of the impact of the right to counsel, cost-benefit analysis, and all of that in their, in their city and their county. Additionally, the, the report, the key findings, what I will share on a high level, is that the current pilot in the city of Dayton has served, the average household size is, size is five members. Eighty-one percent of the clients have multiple children in the household, the, among the served population with this pilot. It was so timely to have all of these beautiful children here today, a part of, a part of that drill team. But what this means for us is that if you do the math, a substantial number of them have probably been impacted by housing, if they live in our county or our city. Eighty-one percent of the clients served with the pilot have multiple children. Fifty-nine percent of clients indicated that set themselves or someone in their home had a disability or a health condition. Sixty-three percent indicated that they are working. Eighty-seven percent of the tenants served by able attorneys were charged late fees by their landlords. Of that percentage, fifty-nine percent of those fees were improper, as determined by legal review. In Columbus, the Stout program projects that a return of at least $4 for every $1 invested in an eviction right to counsel program. Total cost annually to fully implement in Columbus and Franklin County was $6 million, with $5 million for the city and $1 million from the county, and the estimated economic benefit was $24 million annually through reduced reliance on emergency shelters, healthcare, and other social services. These numbers indicate that the access to counsel had the greatest impact on children, disabled, and health-compromised community members. We know that, that keeping children housed has a profound impact on their academic performance, mental health, and emotional stability.
Can you lead the information with this?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any comments?
Thanks.
That concludes this speaker's hour.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Dixon, any closing comments?
Your Honor, I would like to just provide a briefing with regards to the Macintosh encampment. I did check in with our mobile crisis response team, and, and their first, they first made contact with the occupants in the encampment in Macintosh Park on July 15th. So 22 days before there was a removal. Offering outreach and services in an effort to provide voluntary alternatives, formal notice to vacate was given on July 25th, with an advised departure deadline of August 4th. Communications with MVHO indicated that the individuals would need additional encouragement to move on, and the encampment had a presence of drug paraphernalia, alcohol, and a lot of garbage. On August 5th, Major Saunders, Lieutenant Cope, and Sergeant Evans reengaged with the occupants to reiterate the need to vacate and encourage them to connect with services. On the morning of August 6th, Officer Olson with the grow team and Sergeant Evers made a final, Evans made a final contact with the group, again urging voluntary compliance. And I wanna, I wanna make a note here that, that our, our staff, our mobile crisis response team, these are individuals that are, are trying to support the unhoused community and deal with the, the complaints being received by the community, from stakeholders, et cetera. They are dealing, they are working with immense compassion, and our public's work crew today helped folks get their things to the sidewalk and gave them time to remove all their things, so that they, they weren't throwing away their, their, you know, the precious items that they wanted to take with them. So our staff worked with them practically all afternoon today, trying to help, be helpful in, in the relocation. I want to emphasize that all of our parks are clearly signed prohibiting overnight sleeping. In many cases, as you all know, our parks are the only amenity in the neighborhood, for the neighborhood to enjoy. We had multiple concerns, this was a large encampment in a very, very heavily-used park, and we spent $750,000 making improvements to that park to enhance its user-friendliness for the community. And so, it is, it is with, it, we try, we are very cognizant of trying to support our unhoused community, and we know that many don't wanna go into shelter, we know that many don't have a lot of other options, but we also have the neighborhoods who, you know, also have human rights. And they also wanna be able to have their kids safely use parks and gather, and it is just, it is a very, very difficult situation. I also wanna let you know that the team did review the best practices that Ms. Rowe left us the last time she was here, and we are, we, we implement many of those best practices practices between our mobile crisis response team, our fire department, our police department, our P and D, and so they are still finalizing some of that work, but, you know, rest assured, we are working as compassionately and supportively as possible, trying to address all of the stakeholders and human rights that we have to look at.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. Ms. Blackshear, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioner's closing comments. Commissioner Turner-Sloss, some closing comments?
I do, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Ms. Dikstein, for providing that, um, additional context as well as the timeline. I really do appreciate it. Um, and thank you, Dr. Rowe, for being here and for advocating for our unhoused, um, in our vulnerable communities. Just a couple of questions and perhaps is a side, um, sidebar conversation that we can have, but if we could have an understanding as to like, if there is in fact a means or a way for us to publicly put the, um, the, um, the notice available in terms of when these, uh, various encampments are, are, um, being, you know, relocated or however you want to, to phrase it. But if there's something that we could do in addition to the work, right? I know that you said that there was a, a twenty-two day notice that was given, you gave the details of the dates of July the fifteenth, the twenty-second, August the third, the fourth, as well as, as today. So is there something that we could put, put out? I don't know if this will be practical, but for us to work in this space with many of our other partners, I know you mentioned MVHO, but perhaps with Dr. Rowe, um, with many others that work in this space, but even social media, could we use our social media outlets as a means to let them, to let the public and many of those who work in this space, that this is, this is in fact something that we're marching to, we're doing the, maybe it is a checklist, um, that we can publicly, um, note that we have done all of these following things and that, uh, we understand that it is in fact a very precarious situation and we are in fact, to your point, right? We're exercising and noting the compassion, the empathy behind this, but these are the things that we're doing, giving notice, making sure that we're supplying a basket, a trash bag, whatever the case may be, or additional services to support our most vulnerable, just something that we could give notice to the public. And again, we can have-
We can take that back.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dikstein. And, and again, I do appreciate, um, you providing that, that information as well as that additional, uh, context. And I, I hope that we can be in, in partnership and more detailed conversation with Dr. Rowe, as well as DTU and many others that work in this space so that we can address the concerns, 'cause you're, you're right, it's a very difficult position to be in, um, on a number of fronts. Just would like to, uh, thank DTU, thank you all for coming out this evening and your continued advocacy and your, and your leadership in speaking on the concerns that you have raised this evening. We had a number of students that were here this evening that spoke to, um, the importance of affordable housing and the removal of the number of blighted structures that we have throughout our neighborhoods. And so I just would like to recognize Meadow Dell CTC, Mr. Rubin Costello, I believe he's a student, as well as Mr., um, Joshua Thomas is a student, and Mr. David Malone, all three of those gentlemen were students. And so I just wanna recognize, um, their, their ability to be here and to share their testimony and, and their advocacy around housing. It's very, um, important to hear our youth and the impact that it plays on, on many of the members in our communities. So again, I wanna thank Meadow Dell CTC and the students that came out this evening. Um, thank you, Ray Allison, for your comments in regards to, uh, the rental registration program. And I know this is something that Commissioner Joseph and I share, um, in regards to the importance of the rental registration program. Just curious as to, and perhaps again, this is another detailed conversation or a memo could follow Ms. Dikstein, but the Centerville model that was noted, and I understand that we were looking at and why we didn't wanna duplicate our efforts with the, the county auditor, but then we also have Centerville, and I know we're talking about something completely different, right? A different municipality, different issues, different resources, and the list goes on. But just really trying to find a means and way for us to tap into the concerns as it relates to the rental registration program and if in fact there's an, an avenue for us to revisit, um, that in its entirety. And then, as well as the enforcement behind our ordinance that we do have on the books for a rental registration. So Allison, uh, thank you for bringing this, this point to our attention. Let me make sure I follow my notes. Ms. Karen Smith, thank you for your testimony, thank you for being here as well. Mr. Larry Hagan, thank you for your comments and your advocacy and leadership. Ms. Destiny Brown, thank you, Ms. Brown, for your leadership and DTU and all of the great work that you all continue to do in providing that, that detail background and the information for us to, to really do a deep dive and look at a number of the, the savings that you mentioned, in particular, the twenty-two, the twenty-four million dollars and why it is important to make sure that we are investing in, in a number of these various different, um, programming and mechanisms to protect and provide affordable housing from, um, the rental registration program to the right to council program. So again, I, I really appreciate you all being here this evening. Mr. Whitney Harold as well was another student, and I believe, um, that was here to speak to, um, the, the importance of affordable housing. Ms. Cheyenne, Margaret, thank you for providing your, your testimony and giving credence on why it's important as, as well as the impact that it has on our infant mortality. So I appreciate you sharing your call, your client's story and testimony this evening and the work that you're doing in this space. Uh, Mr. Woods, thank you for being here this evening, um, all the best and as you continue to, um, maneuver through your, your complaint process. Again, I encourage you to still work through those various different channels to, to lodge your complaint. Mr. Lee, um, all the best in your continued endeavors as you seek to gain visitation rights with your, your family. Um, and I would also like to thank our, the Western Stars for being here this evening and all the great work and the program that they are, been able to provide for a number of years, as well as their performance during the National Night Out. I would like to acknowledge all of the staff members, um, there are a number of staff members, city staff that came out for the National Night Out yesterday evening, um, and I'm glad the rain stopped and it cleared up for people to come out. There was a lot of preparation and work that went into National Night Out, so kudos to, uh, DPD, many other staff members, Recreation Youth Services, um, the list, I think every department was probably had their hand in, um, National Night Out. Um, in fact, I know they did. So just wanna thank the staff for coming out and acknowledging Old Earth Dayton, Linden Heights, Westwood Elementary and Dayton View Triangle, as well as the Omega Hope Zone for their participation in National Night Out. And then I would like to, last but certainly not least, not last, excuse, least rather, excuse me, and that is, um, this past weekend, uh, DPS, State Public Schools in conjunction and partnership with Tate Winston, they hosted their back-to-school rally, which was a success. There were a number of families and students that came out. It was very festive, it was exciting, um, haircuts were provided, uh, hairstyles as well as book bags, physicals, the list goes on and on. So again, kudos to the leadership of DPS, DPS, and for all of the families that came out and wishing everyone a, um, healthy and safe school year as we roll into the next, uh, school year for twenty-five, twenty-six. I believe school starts on Tuesday, the twelfth of August, and there are a number of back-to-school events. And so Pastor Anthony, thank you very much for being here. Um, had to refer to my notes, the block party is in fact two to five this Saturday at Grace House, and that is located at twelve twenty-two North Main Street. Um, Black Pride is this weekend, which will take place on Courthouse Square. Uh, the Community Unity Festival is at Wayman Chapel this weekend. Hillville, Highview Hills Neighborhood Association, they will also have their, their block party. Uh, the Village Hub kickoff is this weekend as well, at twenty fifty Germantown. The McLendon Institute will have their back-to-school bash this weekend. Uh, the Wreck Your Hood, Shore Your Park is this weekend from one to four. And yes, a number of things that are going on this weekend, so everyone should be fully equipped and have all of their back-to-school gear for the new school year. And that's all I have.
So?
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, some of your great things have happened, and I need to have a long list that we can put up on our website. Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, just a couple. Uh, join me Friday, August eighth, at one PM at the Second Street Market for the kickoff of Eat Fresh by Local to support community food growers. Uh, this event showcases local growers and focuses on combating hunger, particularly uh, in our underserved areas. And also, on, um, now through August thirty-first, Crayons to Classrooms is collecting school supplies for teachers and students in need, uh, all across our region. You can drop off donations at seventeen fifty Woodman Avenue.
Thank you. Ms. Joseph?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. Uh, the first is, if you're curious about composting, uh, this is the right time, this Thursday tomorrow, at eleven AM up at Northwest Rec Center, we're having a compost kickstart. Uh, it's a great way to keep things out of the landfill that don't need to be there. It's a great way to get great soil for your tomatoes or your cucumbers or wherever you're growing. Uh, if you're curious about how to do it, this is the place to do it, up at Northwest Rec Center tomorrow at eleven. Uh, second, staying on the food theme, Commissioner, uh, please join us this Saturday between nine AM to three PM at Second Street Market for the Nourishing Montgomery County, uh, event. They're having, it's free, it's family-friendly, there's food, there are games, there are prizes, there were performances last year, I assume it'll be the same way this year, uh, all focused on getting people fed and fed the right way. So hope you can join us out there this Saturday, nine to three, Second Street Market. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. So I was just trying to check my list and see what was not mentioned, okay? So I think we had, did not mention the German picnic, German Fest picnic, uh, again with the homemade food, uh, plenty of fantastic, uh, German, uh, domestic adult beverages, I should say it that way, and also a culture display, auto show, uh, again, craft and vendors off of Saint Anne's Hills, uh, again, August eighth through August tenth, and, uh, it will be going on on a continuous basis, so please enjoy yourself there as well. Additionally, I want to thank, um, AT&T for the, um, the donation of many of the, um, laptop computers that they gave to young people who are engaged with the, um, Hope Zone, with the Vanessa Ward, CDC, Omega CDC, I should say, uh, great ceremony they had last week relative to that, uh, uh, involvement. And also to thank the members of the Silver Sneakers, who allowed me to exercise with them, uh, last week as well, had a lot of fun doing that, and it was very, very refreshing to see people throughout this community taking advantage of the free opportunity at the Northwest Rec Center to engage in keeping their body and their mind healthy. And, uh, wanted to add something to, um, uh, Mr. Thomas, so thank all of you for your comments and, and, and questions, if you will. But, uh, Mr. Thomas, we are continuously looking at ways of doing with the, dealing with the abandoned homes and vacant nuisance properties. In fact, we have fifteen, um, hundred homes that are on that list, we have rented for eleven hundred of them, and we've torn down, I think, about seven hundred, almost eight hundred of those homes. And each time we tear them down, we're also creating more and more jobs and more and more space for more houses, other, uh, developments to take place in those spaces as well. So I just wanted to let you know that there are things that we're doing, much of what, uh, much of what was communicated by, um, Ms. Dikstein, uh, about addressing these concerns in this community. And of course, those concerns are national, they're not just here in the city of Dayton. So I appreciate you always being here, sharing your thoughts and your comments and giving us recommendations as well. And again, um, Reverend Anthony, thank you again for the program that you're doing, I appreciate that. And we'll talk further about some additional involvement that you can make as far as the city is concerned. So love and peace for all and hatred for none, with no further business to come before this City Commission, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.